I was actually.
All right, I'd like to call the the meeting to order and welcome everyone to our first work session of the 2024 calendar year. So, welcome and please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for braving the normal kind of seasonal weather we have tonight. Roads are clear, everything's good. Again, tonight is our first work session of the the calendar year for 2024. I'd like to open it up with recognition of visitors. I see we have a few people in attendance. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and be recognized? Okay, well, thank you for that. And then that takes us to our spotlight presentation for this evening. Happy to report that we have some data from the state, finally. It was long overdue, but it's kind of interesting how it was released in the dark of night, so to speak, when everyone was getting ready for the for the holidays. So, I appreciate the Terry and Megan and the team getting together and being able to put this information all together on such limited notice, especially with the with the holiday season. And with that, I'll turn it over to Terry. Thank you.
Good evening. So, we are really excited to present tonight an overview of our grade three through eight ELA in math state assessment data, along with regions and graduation data. So, as you'll see in the presentation, as you've heard from me and Megan earlier this year, in the years leading up to this year, while we're unable to compare this year's data at the three through eight data to last year, because there's new standards, new assessment, I can say without hesitation or reservation that we're exceptionally proud of our overall performance, as you'll see, as we compare to other districts across Orange County and the state. Megan will walk you through some data highlights, show the board and the public all of the links where you can take a deeper dive into the data on your own. And we'll also articulate next steps that our teams of teachers and administrators have taken to address any areas of concern. So, before I turn it over to Megan, I just want to repeat that while we always remain proud of the achievement of our district, we are also really reflective. So, every year, the only way that we remain at the top is by reflecting and taking some next steps to address any areas of concern, and that's what we've done already this year. If we were to wait until the data was scrubbed, half of the year is already over. So, we we hit the ground running with our formative assessment data and look for ways to continuously improve. But I'm exceptionally proud of the work of our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and most importantly, our students, as you'll see as Megan presents, we're incredibly proud.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dade. So, just as a reminder, as in past years, I've shared where the data comes from. It comes from School Meter, which is through the New York State Department of Education and directly linked to our district report card, which I'll show you more on later. So, as Mr. Dade shared, this is the first year of our 3-8 ELA in math assessments that are aligned to Next Generation state standards. So, in past years, the exam was based off of the Common Core state standards. Now, it's based off of Next Gen. And then the same movement will take place this spring for science and Algebra I. And then in '25 for geometry, earth and space science, and biology. And then in '26 for Algebra II, chemistry, physics, and ELA. So, I'll speak a little more to how we're preparing for those changes throughout the coming years. If you do want more information, and this is just for your own your own information, the links are provided, so you can click on them. That just gives you Next Gen information, the roadmaps, so on and so forth. And all of this information will be on my website tomorrow for the public, so people can dive in there and take a look. Okay, so, as always, we do our test refusal analysis, how we did 3-8, our regions, and then reflective practice and next steps. So, as you can see, we continue to be trending in the right direction. You may recall back many years ago with Common Core, there was a huge opt-out movement. That has since changed drastically. So, what you will see is a really nice representation of how our students did 3-8 in ELA in math, because we had 93% participation on both exams. Okay, so, again, as Terry noted, we don't have comparison, because this is the first year of Next Gen. But as you can see, we are beyond proud of our results. We have, again, combined overall 3-8 ranked number one in Orange County. And you can see the breakdown for each grade, how we did in ELA. Across the state, we are in the top 6% for ELA for grades three and eight, and we ranked 43rd overall. This is what you'll see when I show you later in our state report card. When you go on there, you can maneuver around, and it'll give you a breakdown per subgroup, and it'll also show proficiency levels of how we did in our district versus New York State. Okay, so 3-8 mathematics, you can see that in Orange County. Again, we ranked first. In the state, we are also in the top 6% for New York State, ranking 42 overall. And again, you can see our assessment data based off of the New York State report card, which at any time you can access. Anybody can access this, and the links are available in the presentation. Okay, our regions exams. This is based off of the following exams, courses that are offered within the high school. And just as a reminder, our eighth-grade accelerated students for Algebra I and Biology are included in this part of the presentation. We do have comparison from how we did last year to this year, because the regions are not based on Next Gen state standards. So, you can see how we did overall, typically ranking second, third, or fourth place. There are some outliers, and we'll talk a little bit more about those specific content areas in our areas for reflection and growth. You can see here in the state, we are ranked in the top 26% in New York State. And again, those are our rankings throughout and where we place in the top percentages. Okay, so this is where I'm going to just show you briefly. So, if you click on here and, oop, just kidding. Okay, so if you click on here, it'll bring you to our state report card. And you can plug in to manipulate whatever data you want to see. You can see specific content to ELA in math, science, social studies. You can see different subgroups. And you can also see how we did. This is how specifically in the ELA exam, the proficiency rate was 77%. We are at 92. This is just one example. But what's most interesting here is the time that we spend digging into each subgroup. So, for example, you know, how did we do with our English language learners, for example? How did we do with our economically disadvantaged? How did we do with our Hispanic and Latino and so on, students with disabilities? So, this is all the percentages. So, for example, our students with disabilities on the ELA regions exam, they received a 65% proficiency rate. So, that's where the work is done within each subgroup area for our data analysis. Sorry, this click, this mouse is not really cooperating. Okay. So, I would I would encourage you to take some time in there. That's where the meat is going to be. That's where you're going to see the areas of growth. You're going to see our levels of proficiency. You're going to see how we did in each subgroup. And that's where we kind of get our hands in and get the work done for what we need to do for each area. Okay. So, as I noted before, we are extremely proud of the work that's taking place within our classroom learning environments with a consistent focus on all of our students. So, you know, we have done a fantastic job, but as Terry noted, someone's having a great time down in the gym. As Terry noted, you know, we continue to do well, because we continue to reflect on our practice and to see where are our holes and how do we keep moving forward, but also celebrating the milestones of where we've done really well. There's a lot of data points in this presentation that last year we said, you know, we need to make that a focus area. We need to build that up, and we've done just that. And as a reminder, this is a standardized assessment. We have a variety of assessments that I've spoken about in the past, our summative and formative assessments that drive our instruction daily. All of those post checks are really what is driving our instruction. And then I spoke at the end there, and you guys can take some time, but that's where you do your deep dive into special ed, ENL, minority student population, and so on. Okay, so reflection, next step. So, you can see that in ELA and math. And as I mentioned before, the other formative and summative assessments, we have overall improved 10% on the elementary level in ELA in math. And our New York State average for proficiency has surpassed by 20%. So, that's a huge gain. In addition, I'm not going to read everything for you, but again, take some time on this. But this is just kind of where that analysis happens within our data team meetings, our department meetings, and so on. So, areas of strength that were noted, some would be reading and informational text, describing character, setting an event. Math, we're doing well with measurement and data. We're doing well with place value, which is important, because that's a strong foundational concept for our students, and recognizing lines of symmetry and two-dimensional figures. You may recall last year, we spoke a lot about vocabulary on the elementary level and just kind of a lack of it within our students specifically to their writing, and just how it carries over to other content areas. You will see that kind of rearing its head later on in the high school reflection. But here on the elementary 3-8 world, we're very happy to say a strength that was noted in the analysis is students being able to determine meanings of unknown and multiple meaning words in their context. So, that's a nice improvement based on the vocabulary from last year. So, some of our focus areas specific to elementary in ELA is going to be working on pulling key ideas and details related to them within the text, and then building stronger constructed responses. So, that's those open-ended critical thinking responses that we expect for our students to do, specifically in the application of their writing. For math, some areas that we're going to focus on are decomposing fractions and solving multi-step word problems using multiplication, division, and fraction and constructed response questions. These are those higher-level critical thinking skills that we need the kids to apply. And then this is some of the work that's taking place to get us there. We have our district writing benchmarks that's ongoing, supporting our students within the literacy block for FMP and LLI intervention, and then our data review meetings that take place. On the middle level, we are very proud. We've surpassed the New York State average for proficiency by 25%. And we are very proud to be within the 1% ranking for our accelerated eighth-grade algebra scores. But also, we wanted to note that within that, we increased our mastery from 43% to 95.5%. That is a huge, huge gain. And remember, that's based on the regions exam. So, some areas of focus within the middle level for ELA, fifth grade is going to work on determining theme or central idea in literature, integration and knowledge of ideas in informational text for sixth, craft and structure in literature for seventh, and analyzing dialogue and determining central idea for eighth grade. And again, this is a couple of dip points, just for you guys to see it. Certainly, there's a lot more going on to meet our focus areas. And then in math, fractions and conversions, geometry is always something that we are trying to continually improve upon. You will see a nice jump in geometry in our high school regions. So, the work that's being done here is certainly showing off. Proportions and word problems, and then irrational numbers. So, what are we actively doing? We're focusing right now, we have a tremendous lift with CBT for fifth and eighth grade that's mandated this year, computer-based testing. So, some of the work earlier in the year allowed us to take a deep focus into three specific areas within the strands that I just shared with you, as they apply to the daily instruction. We're doing a lot of work between the elementary and middle with streamlining our curriculum. We continue to do that. Resources and vocabulary, so that when the kids come to the middle level, they have the same common experience between all three elementaries. And then also just making sure that all kids have the same supports and skills, so that way they can be successful when they get to the middle school. On the high school level, so this is kind of that overarching piece, and I'm not really surprised about this, just based on what we saw with some of the vocabulary standouts last year. So, some areas throughout the content that showed in the analysis of all of the exams was needing support in reading comp, study skills, and vocabulary acquisition. In the area of science, we were very happy that specific to earth science, and I think I mentioned that again later, last year, we did a lot of work with our reference tables. The kids were really applying that skill within their daily instruction, and that definitely paid off in the exam. Our sequencing of science, you may recall that, I think it was five years ago, maybe four years ago, we switched the sequence. It used to be earth science, then biology. Now, it's biology, earth science. We're starting to see positive results because of that, giving the kids more foundational time. And then, just in general, a note to make is that earth science and our biology teachers are working intensely with PD to support the changes that are upcoming for Next Gen. We've been doing this for a while now, sending our staff as teams from the high school to PNW BOCs to get that hands-on practice. They're taking time back in their groups to work on specific questions and changes that will allow them to have more phenomena-based teaching within their lessons to support those changes in 2025 and then 2026 for chem and physics. They'll do the same work. So, some deeper analysis, I'm not going to read through all things about ions here, but that is an area that they are going to be working on. So, in their analysis, you know, one thing that really did stand out was relative average atomic mass calculation. So, some of the work that they'll do this year is adjusting some of their content around titration, ocean acidification, and the process-oriented guided inquiry learning with acids and bases. So, good luck on that. In physics, some areas, so they did a nice dive with pulling any questions with lower than a 77% accuracy rate. And when they sorted them, this is the results specific to the waves and the forces unit. So, they speak here to how they'll break down into more digestible sizes, chunks for the students to manage, understanding, building up their mental stamina with some more quizzes, which I'm sure the kids are not going to love, but it is definitely needed, especially in, you know, such a higher higher-leveled course as physics. And then, working on the vocabulary acquisition skills again. Okay, in bio, they found that the content wasn't as much of an issue in the analysis as it was the students being able to apply the comprehension skills. So, we spoke about that. You know, they'll incorporate more short passages, longer passages, and how to tease out specific information for success. Earth science, very impressed with earth science this year. This has been a big uptick for earth science that we've seen over the past couple of years. Again, the reference tables, lots of hands-on, the PD that's taking place with them. So, they really have shown a nice a nice progression in this area. Okay, so US history in their analysis, some areas that they have found, I will allow you to read all of that and think back to your high school years of going over the Wars Power Act in the Spanish-American War. So, we're going to do some more work on that, but more specifically about our endurance and rigor in our reading and our and our strategies to connect the details between the various topics there. Same idea with global studies and how they'll get to that point. Okay, and then in math, we're spending a lot of time realigning our non-regents courses to match the change in the standards that are coming. In addition, we're looking to explore some more intriguing courses to help our non-region students, or even some students that are in regions, to want to take mathematics for all four years of high school. You don't have to take math all four years, just in case somebody's unaware of that. And then just providing more interactive project-based learning to keep our students engaged in that type of instruction that's not all teacher-centered. So, the same work that our science teachers are doing in preparation, our math teachers are currently doing for algebra and geometry, and then later on, because this year we'll move to our Algebra I new assessment for Next Gen, then geometry in '25, and Algebra II in '26, which is a nice sequence, because that is that is how we roll out our math program. Okay, in English, we've spoken a lot about vocabulary acquisition, reading comprehension. Those are obviously clear key key areas for our English department. They're going to be working on also some more carryover concepts. So, certainly, they have their own content to cover, but keeping in mind, how does that relate across content, addressing reading comprehension, and then getting our students reading. So, you know, a lot of kids in high school, they don't love reading. It's just either by then you love reading or you don't love reading. So, kind of getting our kids to be reading for school, for pleasure, and so on. The more you read, the better you'll do. Okay, so, planning beyond. So, in May of '23, 214 of our students sat for 379 AP. Those are college board college board advanced placement exams. The administration resulted in 12 out of 14 courses scoring higher than the New York and global AP mean scores. Forty-three of our AP students were considered AP scholars. So, that means that they received a three or higher on five or more AP exams. It's very impressive. Our high school has a 73% rate overall of obtaining a three or higher on AP exams over the last five years, with a 4% increase in 2023. And just for anyone who's unaware, typically colleges award college credit for a score of three or higher. These are our current advanced placement offerings. And then in addition to advanced placement, we like to give our kids a lot of options. So, we also have our college course offerings. So, students can take foreign language and science research through SUNY Albany and receive college credit. They can take English, math, technology, and business through SUNY Orange, and accounting and music theory through Marist College. Okay, our graduation rate, 97%. That is a fantastic percentage of graduates. Our class profile for our classes '23, 256 students in the graduating class, 20, I'm sorry, 72, not 27, 72 entered four-year colleges, 21 entered two-year colleges. So, that's a 93% college rate. 3% entered the workforce, 1% for military or other programs, and then 3% were either undecided or unknown at the time of the survey. These are some of the colleges and programs that our students attended as graduates last spring, so they're current freshmen. And then as we look ahead to our current seniors, our class of 2024, we have 270 students in our current class. Highest weighted GPA is a 102. Summa cum laude, remember, we do the Latin honors tier for our students. So, we currently have 28 students that qualify for that. That's an average of 98 or higher. Magna cum laude is 37 students, 95 to 97.9. And then cum laude is 38 students with 92 to 94.9. 103 out of 270 in the class of '24, so 38% of our students currently stand as honor graduates. Okay, so you can access this information again on the website. I'll have that live tomorrow for you. And then also, that data NISID gets you right to the report card. Okay, any questions?
I'll jump in first, I guess, as everyone collects their thoughts, if you have any questions. But Megan, thank you first and foremost for putting this together. When I think of last year's presentation and compare it to this year's, I like to focus more internal information than external. I really appreciate that look, that view, that 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 slice of the the data. Thank you for that. My question goes back to this notion of learning gaps. And the information that the state collects really doesn't slice it in a way that tracks, say, a student through history, right? I understand that at the individual level, as a parent, you're able to see, like, growth scores as it would pertain to how they were doing over time. Do we have access to that type of mean growth slice view of how we're doing as a district or specifically as a as a grade, you know?
Yes. Yep. So, we get, we can have, we can pull data. So, okay, so to back up again, I probably should have shared this in the beginning. So, when we get the first flush of data, it's specific to students. It's the trends of how we're doing. It's not the comparison data. That's what we have to wait on. But we get the kind of down and dirty of how did we do with our strands? How are we doing with our skills? Where are we trending towards our standards? Based on that, we can pull, we can extract specific to students, which we do, and that helps drive our AIS roster, students in need. We use those for our data team meetings. So, those are the kids that are actively sitting in front of us. So, even if you're in fourth grade currently, but, you know, we're looking as a third-grade team, we can pull how our third graders did last year. So, we know where our gaps in instruction are. But now, we can use that as a data point for that student who's sitting in fourth grade and look at all those other pieces, like I spoke to, all the other summative and formative assessment data, to see exactly what that student needs. And then, sorry, and then for the teacher standpoint, we look at the trends. So, that's where we know with the analysis, how are we doing based on those specific trends? Where do we need more support with reading comprehension? How do we know we have issues with vocabulary acquisition? Because it's standing out in the different trends.
And so, when we talk about, I guess, trends at the at the classroom level with teachers, is is there a way to to slice the data along the different demographics that you earlier showed, which was the state data, where you were talking about, I guess, economically disadvantaged versus, you know, as special ed and the like? Is there ways to
Yeah, anything that's there.
to deeper dive on that data?
Yep, anything that's available there, that they have subgroup categories, we can get further reports from to see. So, you know, specific to, say, special ed, we could pull and see how our special ed students did and where their gaps in instruction were.
But from a from a growth perspective, right?
Per student, yeah.
Over 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 time. So, you know, if you're historically like the class of 2027, let's see, how how they're progressing from when they were first taking like the third grade assessments to where they may be now taking what the, get this right, John, the eighth grade assessments, how they're tracking over time.
You should be. Yep. But just remember, I mean, our, like I said, our opt-out rate has improved, like, drastically, but it would be an overarching in that regard. If you're trending per a grade versus a student, it might look a little different.
Understood. But but there's ways to get that type of deeper dive?
Yeah, we should be able to pull a report for that, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Christine?
For clarification, two questions, I'm sorry, two questions. The parts that are reflection of exams, next steps, were those, was that analysis and reflection done by the teams of history teachers, the teams of math teachers? So, they were assessing their own, okay. And then the drill down that you showed, the state report card, when we're looking at those English second second language, special ed students, et cetera, that data is specific to Cornwall, not the state. I understand we could drill down further, but that that first look is Cornwall's data.
That's right. And then the comparison of the two bars, that just shows how we did versus the rest of the state. Yep, but it only gives us ours.
The detail, right. Okay, thank you. The detail, right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Very thorough presentation, a lot of great data, a lot of great things happening in the district. So, so thank you for highlighting that. I want to maybe, I don't know, I maybe got three or four questions, and I don't know if I'm going to ask them all, because it's, it's a lot to take in, right? But I want to, I think, piggyback on Christine's to start in terms of, obviously, we get, you know, it, it just came out on the state report card, middle to late last month, of, you know, kids get the, the four buckets or five buckets, whatever it is, and here's proficient, and here's mastery and stuff. But you really went into, hey, the, the elementary kids need help decomposing fractions, and the high school chemistry kids need help with their pH of hydrogen ion work, and we need to learn more about the, the Spanish-American War. Where does that, so you guys get data, when do you get that data? And how does that come to you? If you could talk about that a little bit more.
Sure. So we have data released to us, I think it was probably October-ish, and that's that, how does specific, you know, how did Megan Argino do on ELA III? How is she trending towards the standards and so on as student Megan? That data comes to us early on, and then it all has to get scrubbed for the comparison that I just showed you of all the percentages and all that stuff. But to me, that's more valuable, because that's where we actually roll up our sleeves and start doing the analysis of what we need to do. In addition, our teachers who are administering the exams, you know, they can kind of get a sense based on the exam of where maybe some of the pieces were missed in instruction after the administration of the exam in June for Regents. So that's, then we get all that information come October-ish. Our, like, what you saw there, I mean, I didn't come up with the Spanish-American War, you know? So our social studies teachers, they took the time, they scrubbed that data, they looked at it, and they said, they put, they extracted the, the holes. Same thing for 3-8. So that's the information that comes early on. It's the trends, it's how we're, how we're moving towards the standards, where we might, where it might be missing, and then the overall per student, how they did on the exam. So we can start pulling that too, to say, who might need support with AIS.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic, because, you know, obviously, we sit through this presentation every year, and I don't think that we've dug into sort of this level of detail previously. And it's, you know, obviously, a lot of it is at the whim of New York State and when they report data back. But I'm really happy to hear that that data comes back early, because that sounds highly useful for you and, you know, for all of our, our subject area teams to dig into and really, as you, you know, if you get it in December, half the year's already gone, right?
Right, exactly.
So I'm happy to hear that that came back early. My next question is, when you talk about the reflection, next steps at the elementary level, it says, based on a variety of formative and summative daily assessments and the New York State standardized assessments, the elementary level improved 10% overall in ELA and math. I guess I'm just wondering at what time period you're basing that on? Is that year over a year? Only because, you know, to, to, you, you covered it very early on, you know, and it's, it's all over the state report card of, hey, the standards have changed, don't even think about comparing this to last year, because it doesn't count. So are you doing that with some internal assessments, or how, how, how is that measured?
Yeah, good question. So, right, so the standardized assessment to the state assessment is one thing, that's the trends, that's how we're doing towards the state standards. The internal formative and summative assessments, to me, is like our meat and potatoes. That's the STAR that we administer three times a year. We administer F and P assessments, we have IXL. So those are all the pieces throughout the year that we can pull those reports and say, where were we last year and where are we this year? So that's where that comes from. And those are all aligned to the state standards. I mean, granted, yes, the standards have changed, and basically, we can't compare last year's state assessment for New York State two years ago with this past year, but the work that's being done in the classrooms is similar. It's always trending towards the standards, so that's where we pull that, is on those and, or those three-time-a-year STAR, the IXL, the F and P, and so on.
Good, thank you. That's very helpful. And that's good, too, because a lot of those internal assessments are given three, four times a year, especially at the elementary level. I know my kids are getting STAR assessments, and it's, here's where you were on day one, here's where you are two months in, here's, you know, I think we've already seen three of those for, for one of my kids in elementary school. So that's helpful, that it's not just one snapshot in time, but you're, you're tracking the growth. So that's really important information.
And, you know, Jim, just to piggyback on that, like, to me, that's what drives our instruction, is that kind of assessment, is the quizzes, is the unit assessments, is all those pieces. This is kind of that, how are we doing, you know, on a standardized level? But to move a kid forward is the work that we just spoke about, is the other pieces.
Yep. It's one, it's the state assessment, the report card is one piece of the puzzle, and I think it's the challenging part, for those of us sitting up here who are not living it day-to-day, is figuring out, and this is what your job is, right, is how do all those different pieces of the puzzle fit together? And, you know, ultimately, as John always says, you know, what we're really trying to get at as a board is, how do we provide the best resources to our teachers and students to make sure that we're only continuous? So it's, it's just always trying to understand, we've got many different touchpoints, how do they all fit together? And how do they, how do they work together as a district? I guess my last question, when it comes to just that state report card in general, and obviously, it's three through eight, so each grade kind of has different, but overall, the ELA seemed to be, you know, five to 10 points lower than the math. The math seemed to be, you know, better on a, on a general basis. Any theories onto why that might be?
So we continue to work on our benchmarks for writing. That's a piece that, you know, we need, we need to do some more work on. So we have tweaked those over the last two years, we'll continue to do that. You know, incorporating more fictional texts in the elementary, there's always this movement of, you know, nonfiction versus the fiction piece, but then you need the nonfiction for the carryover of the content later on that we're seeing. And then I just think the vocabulary, we're continuing to hammer that, and we're seeing some nice improvement, like I shared. But, you know, to see nice improvement this year is fantastic. We want to keep moving that forward.
Uh, thank you. I think that covers most of my list. Thank you.
No problem.
Beth?
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very happy to see the results, very encouraging, I mean, especially, I mean, the numbers by themselves, when you see, like, top 20%, top 14%, that's, that's very nice to see. And another piece that's also good is the improvement. I mean, you're, you're comparison, can clearly see that we're going in the right direction. That being said, again, what got my attention, like, if you want on the flip side, the Chem three and the physics, and they were duly noted there as to what happened and what to do next. My questions are, and you know, like, here, anybody, if you look at Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, Algebra I and II and Geometry, the average between these three topics is 18%. You go to Chem three, top, I should say, top 18% among, you know, all the districts in the state. Chem three, top 56%. Physics, top 37%. So there's definitely a big difference in the results in math altogether and Chem three and physics. Now, when you go to the next steps, reflection, next steps, again, I'm very happy to see that the reflection took place. But I, I can't help but to ask myself, for instance, kind of like the conclusions that the team has, and you say that we will adjust to focus on, right? The content will be adjusted to include so-and-so. My question is, the curriculum is clear. I mean, you're not, like, shooting in the dark. I mean, I know the curriculum, and as a teacher responsible in the classroom, I know that I tackled this topic, this, 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 check, done, I'm done. Why would a student go to take an exam and struggle, for instance, with, with relative average atomic mass calculation? Like, what happened in the classroom in order to, we see, we saw those results?
So I think it varies from year to year. As we all know, physics is very math-based, so I think it's really going to depend on the foundational level of the students coming in. These are our higher-level students, so something else to keep in mind. Whereas the other regions, not all chemistry, but the other regions, if you're getting a Regents diploma, you have to take them. Physics, you don't have to take. So when you look at, specific to us, you can see, like, the, our number of kids that took physics versus a neighboring district versus the state. So that kind of, that plays a part in this as well. You know, you might have, we, we don't have as many kids taking physics as some of our neighboring districts. It's just their preference, maybe they're taking something else. So not, it's just to give you a background, that the numbers, it's not, you're not comparing 100 to 100 in those percentages. And then I also think, I mean, they were really honest, let's look at it, is it a math issue or is it a science issue? And I think it's coming down to the math piece, which they're having conversations with our ma, with our math department about. You know, and in that, then they say, okay, well, where did it really stand out? And those were the areas specific to it, that, you know, when I say they're gonna change it, they, they've already done it. I mean, these adjustments have already happened, they're actively taking place right now for this school year.
Yeah, I, I think this is, yeah, this is important. I acknowledge the fact that not too many students took physics, like, but, but this is important. For instance, like, when you say, is it a comprehension of the concept, which requires better vocabulary acquisition skills versus, again, I mean, you identified questions that would need multiple steps, mathematically speaking, in order to get to the answer. I see that this should have been known already to the teacher in the classroom before sending the kids to take that exam.
But it, but it's not that-
This is kind of like fundamental thing.
But it's not that easy. It's, it's not that easy. So our, our teachers do a fantastic job of knowing what the curriculum is, aligning their instruction towards the standards, but we will not ask our teachers to kind of overemphasize a particular area of a, of a state assessment, because in my experience, in numerous districts, I've seen districts overemphasize a, a particular piece only to have another one pop as an area of deficiency. So I would ask Megan to go back to earth science. We had the same conversation about earth science last year. We trust our teams of teachers to, to dive into the data, figure out in reflective practice how they can adjust, but it's not that they completely miss the mark on something, it's, it's an area of focus. So if you look at that measure right there, it's lower than 77% accuracy rate. It's not, they only achieved a 5%. It's, this is an area that we feel that we could reflect on our practice and, and adjust our instruction differently. Also, in this level of coursework, it's, you're preparing students for things like, I was in an AP course, a post-conference with a teacher, and, and he said, it's not just the content hearing, this is a timed test, so you have to prepare students for how do you tackle this strategy-wise, because you have three minutes to answer this constructed response. So you may know it, because I taught you well, but how you attack an AP test is, is strategy as well. So I think it's that combination of how do you cover the curriculum well, but we're also preparing our students for taking college-level courses that are timed and really rigorous.
Yeah, I mean, I, thank you for, for, I mean, explaining these two points. I, I, I know, this is like the teacher to me is speaking here. I mean, I taught college-level physics, and, and, you know, the vocabulary acquisition skills in order to comprehend the concept, fundamental thing, right? Another thing is multiple-step concept. It's like, I think I've never given a problem in college where it's just like one shot, like, you get the answer. It's multiple-step, like, 15 steps sometimes. So I'm glad to see that there's going to be focus on these two things, and I'm 100% sure that you'd see, like, physics is, thanks.
Thanks, Beth. Carl?
John, I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, to Megan, and I just wanted to say that I think this report is a reflection of the awesome teaching staff that we have in the district. So I wanted to thank you and congratulate you guys. That's it.
Thanks, Carl. Christian?
Um, so I got a lot of different points, and some of this might be because I've actually taught AP classes and given Regents and have done these things, and so maybe my reaction's a little bit different. Two overall points, I would guess suggest in the future to get away from the practice of getting away from comparing ranks, because I don't think ranks show a lot of information. They, they get, you're losing data, especially when you're only comparing the ranks, for example, within Orange County. And I don't think, and, and the second thing is, you're comparing districts that are, like, comparing Andorra to Mainland China to Guyana, and you're, so you're comparing very different things. And so when you're taking average scores of various different sizes and very different backgrounds of districts, these are really not telling us very much. And so, for example, Greenwood Lake is a K through eight district. So it's Tuxedo, I'm sorry, Tuxedo is a very small district, where you could fit the entire district pretty much in this building alone. And so the point is that it's not very useful information. And there are a lot of claims about growth, but there's no data on growth. You just have a two-year comparison, and two data points couldn't sustain that at anything. So it would be kind of more helpful if we went to kind of a line chart showing things over time. And if you're going to use ranks, ranks are comparable even when the test changes.
Can we, can we just, I just don't want to lose anything, Christian. So just as a board, if you all can help us out, because when I came in, ranks were very important in Cornwall. So I just, I just, we need some help from the board, whether, when I came in, my interview said we're number one in Orange County, and they were, they were proud of that. So that's just, we will, we'll present whatever.
This isn't about-
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we try to present what the board has asked us, so the rank was something that we've been doing for-
Well, one-third of the board changes every year, and, well, I wasn't here, but it's not about the values of ranks, it's about the logic of mathematics, comparing ranks to each other. A point made by, in Evolution of Psychology, which is why, why humans are so bad at mathematics, is because humans basically sort of succeed not by comparing, let's say, the absolute differences between numbers, by not being last. Because the way you don't get eaten by the saber-toothed tiger is not being last, it doesn't matter how fast you're running. And so there's a lot of things about human psychology, when you compare ranks, you make mistakes, and this is something that's known about how people process math. So my point about it is that using it is not, is not logically, it's not, it does not logically follow statistically, and that's why you wouldn't compare the ranks in countries if you were comparing, let's say, countries around the world on their rank on different scores. And that's not even leaving aside what's actually being ranked. So my issue is not so much with the fact of the values of previous boards and ranking number one, my issue is that it's actually giving us bad information. You're using a descriptive information to make it, to make an inference, and it really can't sustain that. That, that's my, that would be my issue. And so I think the point is that it would be easier to see that by looking at a line chart over time, showing either progress or something, and that could be done without doing a statistical analysis, but just by kind of sense, kind of the, what Robert Putnam used to call it the interocular squint test. And I think that would be a better way to present the data that would give the community, as well as people, an understanding of what direction it's going in.
No problem. So we'll ask the board if we want ranks in or out before our next presentation. The second was the growth, and we tried to be clear that we can't measure growth on the three-through-eight level, because it's a new assessment, new standards. I know people will say you can crunch the numbers. We don't have that capability of comparing the, the questions in this test to previous. So the growth that we could show is more the STAR assessment data. We look a lot at reading level growth at the elementary level, so we can provide some of that data, but that's why there's no growth data. It's a new assessment at the three-through-eight level.
I, as I said earlier this year, I don't accept that, but I don't want to dwell on that point. But going back to the same thing that Jim brought up about the 10% overall increase in ELA and math, and Megan answered this a little bit about, I guess, is this a composite of STAR, IFP, IXL? How do you, how do you actually create a composite of those three measures to create a metric that then you see 10% growth? Because I think the standard would be, say, if you have three different measures, you take the best measure, you don't combine the measures, because you lose data by, in the aggregation process. So I'm wondering, like, do you weight STAR, IFP, IXL different ways when you create that baseline that you're comparing? that baseline that you're comparing across the two different tests? Or, sorry, the two different ways of doing the formative assessments? I know what STAR assessments are.
So we get an end, actually, we get reports after each administration. And then it's comparison at the end of the year compared to, actually, no, from each class. So who was asking earlier about trend, John? Trending classes. So after each class, you can see how they do on those assessments. And then you can factor in, yeah, it's an average.
So are you averaging the different types of assess, the three different methods you're getting assessment, the STAR assessment, IFP, IXL? And now you're just taking them just equally weighted into one score?
Yes.
And then you're seeing the overall average progress of that composite to the next year's or the next administration's composite?
Correct.
Okay. The next thing, the next item on that page, there's things where you say where we perform to the New York State average in proficiency by 20, 25%, depending on which level we're talking about. Can you interpret that for me? Because what are we exceeding by 20%? Is that in terms of the ranking of our district, the percent that are reaching proficiency? So for example, if we have 40% proficient, exceeding that by 20% might be 50% proficient?
So it's the proficiency. So for three, eight, that's the compilation of threes and fours. And for regions, it's the compilation of three, four, and five.
So how are we comparing that 20% compared to other districts or in New York State?
I'm not comparing it against that. That's on the state report card.
So the New York State average, so we're saying we're 20% above the state average in proficiency?
Correct. Because we are given, you'll see on there, the state comparison.
So you're just using the state number from the report?
That's all we have.
Okay. So you're not calculating, that's just the state?
I don't calculate any of it. It's all given in data.
I know what that is then, and I can have that. One thing, last thing, what's concerning to me, when I look at what teachers are suggesting doing to improve on things, and I just kind of was putting notes as you were presenting, a lot of these I would classify as test-taking skills, not content area skills, like building, for example, test stamina, identification, reading particular types of questions. And is that really the best way to go that we're focusing on skills that are about how to take a test better versus learning chemistry, physics, algebra, global, or US history?
I think it's, I think it's very important, actually, because we need to teach our kids how to be successful students. So we're looking at the whole child. So you're seeing a breakdown specific to each content area. But if you see specifically, I noted about vocabulary acquisition, comprehension, and how it carries over into other content areas. So if they're not pausing and taking a minute to kind of review those important skills, we need to release the kids at some point into the world, and they need to be successful. So those skills and how to, yes, take an assessment, but maybe later on, that's an assessment for college. Maybe that's for your job. Maybe that's part of what you do every day. I know personally, I need, when I'm working on a project, I need to give myself deadlines. I need time management, so on and so forth. So we all actually think that's very important. All those life skills are crucial to making sure that then you're ready and available to learn the content and to be successful in it.
And part of the, in other districts that you'll see with, where they really over emphasize test-taking skills, they'll shut everything down and do worksheets and things that show you how to slash the trash, how to circle the question that's trying to trick you, things of that nature. This district does not do that. They focus on the skills like reading comprehension, like vocabulary acquisition, that is not important just for a test, but it's important for all things that they're doing. But I want to be really clear, I've seen in other districts, particularly urban districts that I've been a part of, of how do you teach kids how to take the test? And I've yet to walk into a classroom in Cornwall where I've seen that taking place. You just won't, you just won't find it. There'll be exposure to things like computer-based testing, and how do you now take what you used to have as a ruler physically and manipulate a ruler on a screen, use an online calculator, things of that nature. We feel like we have to expose our kids to it because it's not fair to all of a sudden sit them in front of a computer screen, and then they're not ready to use the tools that are available to them, how to highlight online and things of that nature. But the test-taking, the drill and kill that I've seen and things of that nature just isn't, isn't taking place here.
Christian, you done?
I have one more question.
Okay, but on this, on this-
Back on this topic.
Please.
I just wanted to share with Christian that US history this, last year, you'll know that was a big thing for me, right? Because we didn't have the COAT. So I was on top of that region's exam. What I can say is that the test-taking strategies were all based on content. That was, it wasn't exactly like Terry described. It was a lot of work, and there was a lot of after-school support. But every single one of those sheets, every single one of those reading comprehensions, every single one of those questions were the same data they'd been learning all year. So it was reinforcement of the knowledge in the curriculum, as well as how do you take this test with enough time? How do you, you know, if you don't know the answer, go back and do it again. And these are things that are just repeated, you know, over and over. And I have to say, both of my kids, without a COAT teacher, passed the regions. So I, and I give a lot of credit to that review strategy that they used. So I can only speak for that one class, that it's not solely test-taking. It is, it is a combination.
I'm not saying that they're, actually, I have a lot of faith in our teachers. So I'm not saying that they're doing test-taking.
I wasn't insinuating you weren't, but you made the comment, yeah.
No, no, I know, you know, because I gave you something when, for US history. So you know how I think about that class in particular. But the idea that most districts are doing slash and trash and somehow we're different because of that, I frankly don't think that Rochester, Washington DC, I've taught in several urban districts, they're not doing that either.
It doesn't matter, I think.
They're doing a lot of different things. There's many good teachers. They're not just simply teaching the test.
That sounds fair. I just said I've seen it in other districts. I was the principal of an urban school. I led schools in DC and Rochester, and there was that exposure. There's also fantastic teachers there who are doing great things. I've just seen what emphasizing test-taking strategies like slash or trash, I didn't make that term up, things of that nature are occurring. Fantastic teachers everywhere. I completely agree.
So I'm based upon, I'm basing my description upon what's in the presentation, describing what their reaction's going to be. And I'm expressing concern about that. I have taught in urban schools. I've taught some of these topics. And that there are a lot of things that would be things I would describe as test-taking skills that are mostly about doing better on a test, not necessarily doing better on the subject, or frankly, life, life-learning skills. Now, my faith is that I don't think that's actually what teachers are doing. I think this is what teachers are saying they're gonna do, because some students did wrong on one item, on one region's test, and that therefore comes up in the data. And so they have to say they're doing something, so that's what they're going to do. But it's over, I mean, most of the bullet points that are making suggestions in different subject areas would give me pause about really what's, what is happening. So I think that, I'm raising that as a concern. If you're concerned about it, I'm happy. But that is what's written here. And I'm using your word about slash and trash. That's not something I said. Frankly, it's the first time I've heard it, and I've taught in these schools. So everyone has a different term describing it. But I don't think that's what most teachers have been doing for 20 years, and certainly not in New York State on these tests.
I agree. Okay. Thank you for that, that discussion. I think it's invaluable. Christine, do you have something else? Can I, can I see if there's someone else who has a question? And I'll, but you'll be the first on the second round. Anyone else? Louis, you have?
I don't, John. I was gonna, Jim, Jim touched on what I want. I want to, I want to understand how we disseminated. Megan said, you know, we will, and we, and thee, and us, how, how that matriculation happened. But Jim touched on-
Right. Great. Thanks, Louis. So Christine? Yeah, you're up.
I just, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask for it. However, there's a lot of comprehension, reading skills. You gotta be able to read, to do the work. I would like, not now, but at some point, I would like more information about what is our early intervention with reading? What is our reading program? And how are we identifying people who struggle? And what are we doing to help them? Because by fifth grade, if you're not a fluent reader, chances are you're gonna struggle forever.
That's a statistic that's pretty much universal, not just in Cornwall. That's throughout the world, actually.
It's a reading phenomenon, yeah.
Exactly.
So I, that's one of my things I'd like to know more about.
Yeah.
Not today, but I just would like it on the docket.
I think that, that's, would be invaluable. Thank you for that.
John, if I could just-
Carl?
Go back to one of the things that Christian had mentioned about data. I think that's where the board needs to step in and kind of guide the administration on exactly what we're looking for. Because just to get back to what Terry was saying, is that last year, when I came to these meetings, data was important for the board. Now it doesn't, you know, Christian, it doesn't feel like maybe it is. But I think we need to guide the administration exactly what we're looking for, because that's a tough spot for them to be in. We asked for data, they gave you data, not too happy about it. And, you know what I mean? I think we just need to fill them in and say, hey, this is what we're looking for, guys, next year when you come. Because it seems like whenever they put a presentation together, we always have something, well, that's not what we're looking for, you know? Well, let's guide them and tell them what we're looking for. That's all I, that's all.
Carl, thank you for that. I think, you know, a lot of these issues get solved through collaboration, one. And the great tool with which hopefully we'll be better collaborators at the board level, at the, at the district level, at the classroom level, is if we get all same page through a strategic document that kind of guides us to include the types of measures or metrics that we think are important for us to track. We don't have that, but we're gonna get there. And, but thank you for, for raising that issue. I have just one question to get back to the presentation that Megan gave, or a second question. I guess I already asked my first. If, if I were a betting man, based on the data that I, I saw tonight, I would suggest that the, the two exams that we fell below the mean for state in AP were physics and chemistry. Is that, is that a fair assumption to make?
Were we ranked below us?
Well, I'm just saying, because it doesn't say. It says just 12 of 14 courses scored higher. Well, what were the two courses that scored below?
I don't remember off, but probably.
I would, I would bet dollars to donuts, it was physics and chemistry to Bass's point. And just like in sports, where you have to start them young, right, with youth, youth athletics, that's how we're good in most endeavors of athletics here in Cornwall. I know we're at an early level revamping the, the science program here, to start it early with elementary and hands-on. If, in fact, chemistry and physics are below the mean, what are we doing to get us at least to the mean?
So that's a good point. So we have, over the last two years, we've done an extensive revamp of our science curriculum, K through eight. So that has included pilot programs, that has included working with teams to get feedback on what's working, what's not working. That has included an intensive professional development with in-house coaches who have come in and have trained our teachers on implementing Smithsonian science as it relates to the next-gen science standard. So I fully anticipate in the coming years, we are gonna see a really nice uptick in our science. We're already seeing it in earth science and biology as a reflection. But I fully anticipate that as we continue to move forward, Smithsonian science, this is the first time that Cornwall has had a consistent science program with the hands-on application, the phenomena-based learning. And this is starting with our five-year-olds. So it will be moving up throughout. It's being done with fidelity. There's investigations involved. The kids have to do similarly to how they're expected to do a number of labs to take a region's exam. So I anticipate that that movement that we've been working on for the last two years will show positive results. And then, you didn't ask this, but Christine, answer your question, and we certainly can do more information on this. But we've done similar work to that over the last two years with FMP and LLI. So FMP is Fountas and Pennell, and then LLI is the Level Literacy Learning, Intervention, rather, for AIS is LLI, and then FMP is, leads our, our literacy block with our guided instruction. So again, it's a, it's a systematic approach. It's consistent with all three buildings. All of our teachers have been trained, like incredibly amount of training involved in both those programs. So in both those areas, reading com vocab skills, writing, and all the science strands related to next gen, I fully anticipate a nice upward movement in those areas.
Wonderful. Jim, please.
Yeah, not a question. Maybe just a move forward for us as a board. Maybe, maybe tie a bow on this discussion. I think, Carl, your suggestion is fantastic one. And Christian, your point is well-taken of, hey, there could be three new board members. Who knows what our composition will be next year? And it's certainly incumbent upon us as a board to work with the administration to get them to present what we want to see. I, I think this year's presentation got a lot more of what we wanted to, I don't know, a lot more, but was an improvement in some areas that we wanted to see over last year's. And that was in collaboration of, you know, some board members had just off-the-record conversations, and, and those conversations were then had with the administration. So I guess maybe just taking your suggestion, Carl, very tactically, if you had things that you liked, if you had things that you didn't like, in terms of, here's things that I want to see, here's additional things that I'd like to see, please email John and I, and we will happily have that discussion with Terry, and just sort of plant the seed to next year, you know, with the caveat, of course, of who knows who's gonna be sitting at this table. But it's always a work in progress. It's always a constant improvement. So while it's fresh in everybody's mind, you know, please shoot a note to John and I of, of, you know, statistical measures that we saw, what we'd love to add, what we didn't like, and we can always work on, you know, continuing to refine this.
Thank you for that, Jim. You know, to keep, in keeping with our mantra, our district mantra of striving for excellence every day, right? It's continuous improvement. So if there's ways to make this presentation better, and metrics that would be useful for, for the board, please. This is, this is all about collaboration and getting us all to a better place, right? Because I, I don't think anyone is trying to deceive or deflect or defer any type of information. It's just a matter of making sure that the right information gets to the right people so that we can act accordingly to make things better for the students. Because that's the focus. And as much as, you know, Terry mentioned about the, the previous board's focus on, on ranking, it's, that's not paramount. Rankings are not paramount. It's how our students are learning and their ability then to succeed in life after they leave these, these buildings. That's, that's the true test. That's the metric of success that we need to be focused on. It's nice that we enjoy amongst the county such a high level, but we can always do better. And we should never rest on our laurels. And hopefully, the data suggests that from the classroom to the boardroom here, no one is resting on their laurels and trying to make it better day in and day out. Richard? Sure.
Thank you. I've been quiet tonight. I think great discussion, and I like the idea of collaborating and telling the administration what we want to see. And maybe think, can we do this or have a conversation about this in a board retreat setting? And discuss, like, you know, have a discussion instead of sending emails, have a discussion with everyone about what we'd like to see and go back and forth?
I think, I think we've, we, you know, we've established that, that desire-
Yeah.
-to improve things. So, so whatever avenue or form of communication, I know this all started with an email sent in the beginning of the year of what types of spotlight presentations does the board think would be useful? It's funny that we're getting to the point now where we're actually getting into the, the specific content of the, the presentations, not just the, the presentations, the, the topic itself. And I, I think that's, that's very encouraging. So yes, any way that we could do that, I think we, we should pursue it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Megan, thank you for a great presentation. And I would like to move on then to the consent agenda. Oh, thank you, thank you. I had been written all over that. Any, any committee updates at this point? I, I know we met last and we provided committee updates. I don't think there's, there's anything to update. Richard, go ahead.
Real quickly, I'm gonna be very brief here. So everyone got the visitation committee report last month at the meeting. At some point, I'd like to set up a period for the board to maybe discuss those, the report and the findings. the report and the findings in there, and maybe during the next meeting, we can do that.
So, so thank you for that, Richard. You know, we're, a great segue to, to next meeting in that we are probably going to need an executive session that would start six o'clock, as opposed to the normal seven o'clock time. And I think that would be one of the, the areas of what we'll talk about.
Okay.
At that, so, so, sure.
Good, thank you.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Louis, you want to?
No, my, my, I don't.
You just want to let everybody know Facilities has a meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah, we can. No, no change from what I said last meeting, but as, as an update, we have a Facilities Committee meeting tomorrow evening, we have a lot to go over and should be fruitful.
Great, thank you, Louis. No one else? Let me just add, in terms of the survey we talked about, I received an email late, late, or early this evening, I guess, from our friends at Scolaris. They've, they've re-scoped, and maybe scope is not the right term, they, they've rewritten their proposal. That proposal would include four groups, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, students and teacher, students and families as part of this survey. So, we'll have four constituent groups, just for the avoidance of doubt there. The program would have a survey that's, is done this year and a survey that's done next year. So, within this contract, we would have two surveys embedded in it. One would be for, for this school year, the next one, the second one would be in the following year. The, the focus on it would be over six different dimensions, much of that which we'd already covered, climate being one of them, also resources, instruction, special or social and emotional learning, another component. The price of that approaches about $27,000. The good news is, it is a, a cooperative service, so it is state-able on whatever our, our calculus is for that, you know, 65, 70, 75%, whatever. And for impact on this school budget, this year's school budget, we'd only have to pay half. So, we'd pay half this year for that survey that we do this year, and the next survey for, for next year, we'd, we'd incur the, the other portion of it. So, so net-net, it's a great deal. We just need to work out the, the final deal on the, on the contract, but I imagine that we're going to be starting this dialogue with Scolaris here most, most quickly. And with that, I'll, yeah, sure, question?
Does that contract include a analysis of the results and a debrief with the different stakeholders?
I'm not sure when you say debrief, a report?
So, well, a, a meeting with the people who the results are about, where they go through what they mean, what are the connections between them, what are the recommendations going forward?
So, so they're, they're, at, at some level, I think there will be that type of discussion. I don't believe it's going to be at, down to the building level at this juncture. There, there is a great deal of information that will be captured down to the building and grade levels, and we will have use of their software to slice and dice the data, how we would like to use it for actionable purposes to enhance how we do things. So, so, sort of kinda, but not in the traditional sense that maybe you might be familiar with where managers have access to that specific feedback that they've received about how their classroom or, or department were operating.
I, it would be good if we could ask, if we can ensure that they're doing a correlation of, these questions all correlate to one another on the back end, so they can look at three questions and say, this is the root cause.
Right.
So, that's what I'm talking about, if they can provide that kind of data, because otherwise, we're looking at them one at a time, and you might pick one and try to make an impact, but it's not going to have the depth of impact you're looking for.
Exactly. So, so they'll ask multiple questions for one specific area of focus. And, and so that'll be aggregated into these six dimensions that I, I alluded to. So, but thank you. I, I, and if it's not, we'll, we'll make sure that we're able to adjust it as we go, as we get deeper into this, okay? Any other questions on that? Nope, great. So then, let's move on to then the new business portion of tonight's meeting, the consent In the interest of time, is there anyone who would like to take an item off the consent agenda for a separate discussion? Bass?
Number six, the bid rejection.
Number six, okay.
Same thing, number six.
All right, two for number six, any, any others? Six, six and seven, okay.
Oh, five.
Oh, five, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the five. Okay. Obsolete equipment, five? Is that right, Christian? Yep, okay, great. All right, so for the consent agenda, we have items one through four. We have a, a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, motion passed, okay. So, let's take them by, by numeric order. Number five, obsolete equipment technology, we have a motion.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Discussion, Christian?
So, just looking at the list of the obsolete equipment, I noticed that there are several hundred Chromebooks among that. I was just wondering, what is the age of those Chromebooks and why were they determined obsolete? Were they obsolete because they were damaged, or they're obsolete because they're old and they're no longer functional for what we need to use them for? And Harvey, I'm guessing you can comment on that?
Yes, I can. Those Chromebooks are out of, they're beyond their useful life, they will no longer be supported by the manufacturer to actually provide any kind of updates. I don't have the exact year that they were purchased or how old they are.
They're essentially all, if they're not being supported by
They're not, no longer supported. Correct.
We have a motion before the board, it's been seconded, discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Next item, District-Wide Capital Project Phase One Bravo Bid Rejection. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Who is there? Bass first, thank you.
Yeah, I, I read what Terry showed us that the bids, all bids were rejected for COH and another one for just elementary, COH and what was the other place?
COH.
Just COH, yeah. So, I mean, bids came with a substantial amount over budget due to continuing problems with labor and material. How's that going to be factored in? I know there's going to be a presentation, you know, coming, I mean, we're going to have here, we're going to talk a little bit more about it, but you know, I mean, when we talk about capital project, we have limited amount of money, and with the situation we're in right now, I mean, how can you reconcile these two facts? Like, we can't increase, I mean, we have our voted on, agreed upon, you know, budgets, and the reality is different. Like, we couldn't foresee what's going to happen, like, problems with both labor and material. So, what's the solution?
So, we talked about this as, as a potential issue as we engaged in this process. I shared with board leadership that, you know, I'm thankful that we're this far along before we reach this quandary. BOCs opened their books over budget, just with their first bidding process with materials and everything that we signed up for. So, what we do is we re-scope it, we look at the ways that we can parse out the work and, and do a rebidding. The reason it's rejected is we wouldn't move it forward so that it would tank our project, that's why we're asking for your approval today, because if we were to move forward with the bids that came in, it would significantly impact the rest of our project. So, we don't have all of the details now, but know that it would be repackaged in a manner that allows us to still move forward with the work. We see what the bids come in then, and then we have a presentation from Palumbo where you can ask the more detailed questions about what does this mean longer term? If we're over, at that point, I can't say the number, it won't be 800K like Mr. Sotlin stated as, as where we were with the initial bid, but at that point, Palumbo would be able to tell us along with our architects, what does this mean for the rest of the project?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Terry. I, I've seen projects where kind of bids came way over the budget and they had to scale down the project in a way, I mean, when you look at it, like, what was proposed first and what they have to go with, like, night and day, right? I mean, on the architectural level and, you know, I don't want to be more specific than that, but when we're talking about COH, we're talking about the windows. I mean, how would you scale down windows, like, lower quality? I mean, we're talking, we're not going to renovate every other year, I mean, we're just going to last us 20 years, if not more. So, I can't picture how would that be handled?
So, there's a couple different ways, there's more than a couple different ways, and we'll be looking at every single one of them. Just as an example, the windows were bid out as part of the GC, okay? What we're going to be looking to do next time is to bid them out directly from a window installer, a window manufacturer installer. There won't be the GC who typically would oversee the project, including the windows, and it would also have their markup. We're just trying to whittle down the best we can without changing what we're looking to achieve. There's also things that we can do, for instance, this is Phase 1A, we know we have a Phase 2, which is really the biggest phase, it's the athletic complex, it's the things up at the high school, there's more bathrooms and locker rooms at the middle school. There are things that we can look at with regards to that scope and put them as an alternative, or an alternate, as it's called, where if we don't want to do it, we don't have to do it, okay? And that would free up money. There's lots of strategies and, and, you know, you know, it's, it's all being looked at, it's all being analyzed, and we will have a strategic plan. The Palumbo Group will be coming and talking to the board at the next meeting, and they will be giving you more insight into this whole process.
Thank you, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Bass, for that, and Terry and Harvey, thank you. You know, when I, when I heard Harvey just now, the thought came across my mind of, of value engineering, and I'm, and I'm happy to hear that value engineering was not described or mentioned at all by Harvey, that there are other ways that we can go about getting the work that needs to get done in the way it needs to be done, done, and getting a little bit more creative in how we go about reducing the overall cost. So, I, I look forward to more information on that and continuing this, this important capital project that we are embarking on. Any other questions on this? Richard?
Thank you. So, I'd like to understand more about the process of how and when the board is typically informed about, like, important stages of the bidding process. Can you explain how it's usually done?
Exactly how it is here.
Yeah.
So, the bids come in, they have to be scrubbed, we don't know what's valid of a number, and we don't know what's invalid of a number. So, once that comes through, we get a recommendation from the CM, the construction manager, and the architect, in conjunction with meetings that we have, and then we bring it to the next board meeting. That's exactly what the process was.
Okay, so those are the, the people that are involved in the, the process of bid rejection, the recommendation that's brought forward?
They're, they're part of the process.
Right.
They have a recommendation, yeah.
Okay, because, and this is just my opinion, sometimes I feel like we need to improve the information sharing process, because sometimes it feels like we're playing the catch-up game, where I find, I see it on the agenda, and then after the fact, it's shared with us the information.
So, but, but I shared it in my Friday update, so we provided the board with
No, and I, yeah.
This occurred right before the break. I provided a Friday update, the first Friday back from break for our first board meeting, so I'm not sure how we can improve the timeliness when this is pretty much as quickly as it could happen.
That's just my opinion, I think. It just seems like we're getting the information after it's taken place, after the decision's taken place.
No, your, your action tonight is the decision.
So, 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 so just to clarify, Richard? We ran into a, an issue, Harvey and the construction manager and the architect recognized that there was an issue. The first step to solving that issue is to bring that issue to the board, that's happening this evening. Hopefully, we can get to a position where we will agree to reject the bids that we had received, with the understanding that now it's time to go back to the drawing board to figure out how we can receive bids that we can actually act upon. So, if I could, in the interest of time, maybe you and I or Jim can get together and, and kind of flesh out your, your concern, because I, I, I understand you have a concern, I'm not 100% sure what we can do to address it, but I would do want to address it, but I don't want to do it tonight.
Okay.
Right now. We could, I think we could do that offline, just so, and then report back to everybody at the next meeting, okay?
Sounds good.
Hey, thank you. Carl, go.
I just got a couple questions. My, most of my questions are going to probably go towards when the Palumbo Group comes in, and that should be interesting. But Harvey, how many bids did you receive?
Let me see if I have it here. A total, let's see. Here we go, okay. So, for the general construction, the GC, we got three, three bids there with regards to the HVAC and the plumbing component of everything, six bids, with regards to the electrical component, four bids, and with regards to the asbestos abatement, six. So, there's plenty.
Do, do you see any problem with our vetting process? Is our, is it, is it possible our vetting process is too, too strenuous and that's why we're not getting a lot of bids in?
I think this is a lot.
You think that's a lot?
Yeah. I mean, let me rephrase it, could it be more? Yeah. But there are many times you get one or two.
Right.
That's it, yeah.
And when did we come up with a Phase 1A?
That had to do with the fact that there were certain things that we could not include based on timeliness into Phase 1, which is what we're doing all now, or hopefully we're finishing up now, should I?
We would have been in a world of hurt if COH was part of that initial
I wouldn't say the word include, I would say the word that just couldn't get complete in the timeline that we, that were, that was initially projected by the CM, right? The CM floated a timeline with a group of projects, and then some portion through that effort, the CM realized, we can't complete it all, we got to focus on a chunk, and the balance turned into 1A.
Right.
So, it's still all Phase 1 identified, but because, again, because of timeliness, they had to focus on what was open in, in this, in this building and others, so that's when And then the balance got pulled out and began to be called 1A.
It's just a problem of trying to do everything in 12 weeks or 10 weeks or whatever that timeline is.
So, so Carl, I guess to, to answer your specific question, I believe that happened sometime in May or June.
Okay.
That was identified as a, as a, as a, as a risk that needed to be addressed. It, it might have been as late as June, but for, I, I think the Facilities Committee was talking about it in, in May.
Louis, can I just ask you a question, could clarify from my understanding, since my understanding is like there were two parts to this because of the way that the bond was voted as two parts, right? And basically, Phase 1 was that first part, which is bathrooms all over the, in all the different buildings, and some of the construction, electrical work, et cetera, and then there was the athletic facility, which was the biggest chunk of Phase 2. And so, Phase 1 is all those things that were in the first bond, but obviously, they couldn't be fit in one summer. So then you're, it's still Phase 1 because it's the same description, scope of work, but because it's not happening at the same time, one is 1 and one is 1A. but because it's not happening at the same time, one is 1 and one is 1A. Is that a fair description?
Yeah, the, the balance would be, we parsed out, and, and we, this group, just a tongue-in-cheek term, began to call it 1A to differentiate it from the phases when we were talking about. Well, we were trying to identify with Terry, what exactly what was gonna be completed and what was gonna be focused on. It's the same, same Phase 1, but just that one portion got parsed out.
What was described with the committee in the capital project description, where all the different things were described as Phase 1, but they can't, because of time and space limits, we can only do so much in one period of time, right?
Yeah.
I think the point is, we're basically on, is we're, we're still doing the things that we've promised.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 no- nothing was eliminated. What was voted on will be completed, as voted.
I, I just had, just had one more quick question for Harvey, and I was just wondering if there was any kind of performance clauses in these contracts when you're writing them up?
Yes.
There is. So, if they don't meet the deadline, or whatever it is, and they actually kick back to the school district? Is that how that, what's your performance?
So, currently, we don't have, there's not a, um, a penalty or incentive either way. In light of what's been going on in the industry, um, we are looking to add that into the future contracts. It's just a completely different world right now with regards to construction. So, if had we known what we were gonna be, what everybody didn't know what we're gonna be running into, it probably would've been put in back then.
So, you're saying, moving forward with Phase 2, that would be included in, are you, right?
The work that is yet to be awarded would have conditions in it that would have dates that they would be held to.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any other discussion, Christian?
Just one last question on this. So, Harvey, I know the lowest bid was nearly just under nine-hundred thousand dollars above what was budgeted. Just so I understand the range, what was the highest bid? How far, I mean, I'm gonna guess even significantly more than, than that.
It was.
I mean, over what was budgeted, roughly.
So, for the, uh, for the GC, the, um, the low bid was about a million five, and, I'm sorry, about a million four, and the high bid was a million six. Nothing significant there. With regard to the HVAC, you went from a, a low of two-fifteen to a high of almost seven-hundred thousand.
Oh, fine, okay.
With regards to electrical, you have a low of about sixty-eight and a high of a hundred and fourteen. And asbestos, you had a low of, uh, two-hundred and thirty and a high of three-hundred and sixty-two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so that's, um, item number six, district-wide capital project, Phase 1, Alpha. I, I called it Phase 1 Bravo earlier. Basically, Phase 1 deferred, uh, bid rejection. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, okay. We have now, item number seven, professional learning plan adoption. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion, Christine?
So Christine and I were on this committee, and I just really, um, in, in the interest of time, I don't wanna drag this out, I just wanna, uh, thank Megan for her leadership on the professional learning development. I think a lot of people were involved, I think it was a significant improvement, and, um, I was heartened by all the work that was done by a variety of different people, educators in district, and, you know, things that I think are improvement going forward, and I look forward to working with Megan on this. I will actually come to the meetings as the rest of the year. I know you kinda commented that attendance may be optional going forward. But I, I think this is very important work, and I thank Megan for, um, for, um, for being the leader of that.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris, Jen, Christine, and, and Megan for that, okay. We have a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, motion passed. That brings us to the next item, which is recognition of visitors. Is there anyone in attendance still that would like to be heard? Please come forward, state your name and your comments. Thank you.
My name's Brenda Wright, I'm an eighth, eighth-grade math teacher. Good evening, Brenda Wright, eighth-grade math teacher. I really, uh, appreciate, um, the accolades that you gave the teachers concerning the data presentation that you saw. When the data came out, I did some calculations, and Cornell was, uh, the only, or the first district in Rockland, Orange, and Ulster. In math, we ranked thirty-seven, and in ELA, thirty-eighth. And I do think it matters. And it's the teachers, the administrators, the custodial workers, and yourselves. Gosh. Together, we make this an excellent district. All the work that we do puts our students ahead of the game, no matter what path they choose. And most of them are appreciative. And this isn't really what I was going to say. But, um, when we're talking about physics and math and how to get our kids through to have better scores in the audience, I was thinking about, my brother got his certification in gifted and talented. And instead, maybe of adding programs at the high school level, maybe we need to flip it and add some of those programs at the elementary level. And give the kids the challenge if they wanna take it. Because I've taught my share of students over the years. And, um, it's amazing who gets geometry and who doesn't, and who gets algebra and who doesn't. And who can play games of strategy and do really well. And it's not all the same people. So, that's my suggestion. I am going to, um, end with that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Brenda, well said. Okay, um, anyone else? Well, then that brings us to adjourned the meeting, may I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.